This video thoroughly covers everything in Unit Six of AP Human Geography in just fifty-two minutes. It's part of my full five-hour course review, which you can also find on this channel. You'll occasionally see mentions of the Five-Hour Study Guide and FRQ Mastery Playbook. Both are designed to be completed while watching these videos, and they're linked in the description if you want to get exam-ready in just five hours. Otherwise, enjoy the video. Unit Six in AP Human Geography is titled Cities and Urban Land Use Patterns and Processes. The unit contains eleven lessons. Let's dive right in with Lesson One. In this lesson, we will examine urbanization, which refers to growth and expansion of cities and towns. The key question for this lesson is: How and why do cities emerge and grow? First, we'll look at the site and situation of cities, which help explain where cities form and why they grow in certain ways. Then, we'll examine the factors that influence urbanization. Let's start with the concept of site and situation. The first part of this concept is site, which refers to the physical characteristics of a city's exact location. This includes things like access to water, elevation, soil quality, natural resources, and climate. For example, ancient cities often formed near rivers because water was essential for drinking, irrigation, and transportation. A flat area with fertile land could support agriculture and larger populations. Even today, cities like Cairo on the Nile and Paris on the Sen reflect the importance of site in city formation. The second part of this concept is situation, which describes a city's location relative to other places, including its connectivity to trade routes or other cities. A city with a good situation might sit at a crossroads of trade or between two major regions. Cities with access to oceans, railroads, or highways tend to grow faster and attract more investment. For instance, New York City grew rapidly because of its situation as the major American seaport for trade between Europe and North America. My students often struggle with the difference between these two concepts. So let's have a look at the example from this lesson's free-response question in the FRQ Mastery Playbook. It shows Cape Town, a major city in South Africa. This city's growth was influenced by both its site, such as its safe harbor and access to fresh water, and its situation, because it's a choke point, for trade between Western Europe and Asia. To recap, site refers to the physical characteristics of the city itself, such as its climate and farmland. Situation refers to the relative position of the city to other important locations, such as the distance to trading partners or position along trade routes. A strong site can attract early settlement, but a good situation is often what allows a city to expand and remain important over time. Together, site and situation explain much of a city's long-term success. Okay, now let's look at the three forces that influence urbanization that you need to know for AP Human Geography. These are: Changes in transportation and communication, population growth and migration, and economic and political developments. The first force is transportation and communication. Improvements in transportation, such as railroads, highways, and air travel, allow people and goods to move more easily, expanding city boundaries and making urban living more practical. Similarly, new communication technologies, like the Internet and smartphones, support economic activity and allow cities to grow even in less-connected regions. For example, tech hubs can now emerge in places that previously lacked industry, simply because they are digitally connected. The second force is population growth and migration. Natural population increases and rural-to-urban migration both contribute to urbanization. As people leave farms and villages in search of better jobs, education, or healthcare, cities grow. This is especially common in developing countries where migration can cause cities to expand rapidly, sometimes faster than infrastructure can keep up. The third force is economic development and government policy. Cities tend to grow when they become centers for trade, manufacturing, finance, or tourism. At the same time, government policies, such as investments in infrastructure, zoning rules, or tax incentives, can encourage urban growth. In China, for instance, government-backed "special economic zones" led to the rapid rise of cities like Shenzhen. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on urbanization. In this lesson, we learned that cities grow because of their site, meaning the physical features of the city location, and situation, meaning their relative location, especially in relation to other trading partners. We also looked at how transportation, communication technologies, population and migration, and government and economic policies can all influence urbanization of cities. Check your answers for this section using the Study Guide and Answer Key before moving on, and if you want to have a go at answering the free-response questions about Cape Town's site and situation that we discussed earlier in the lesson, you can complete them now in the FRQ Mastery Playbook. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit Six Point Two. In the previous lesson, we looked at why cities emerge. In this lesson, we will explore the ways they grow over time. First, we will examine the development of cities in the developing world. Then, we will turn our attention to the developed world. Let's start with the developing world, or what human geographers called "the periphery and semi-periphery." The developing world has produced some of the largest cities on Earth: mega-cities and meta-cities. While both terms describe cities with massive populations, they differ in size and impact. Mega-cities are cities with more than ten million residents. While earlier examples of mega-cities were located in developed regions like New York City, today, most are found in the periphery and semi-periphery. Examples include Lagos, Jakarta, and Mexico City. These cities have grown quickly due to a combination of rural-to-urban migration and high natural increase. People are drawn to these mega-cities in search of employment, education, and healthcare. However, the speed of growth often exceeds the capacity of local governments to provide adequate housing, sanitation, transportation, and other infrastructure. As a result, mega-cities in these regions often face major problems such as traffic congestion, overcrowding, poor air quality, and widespread informal settlements. Meta-cities are a step beyond mega-cities. A meta-city is typically defined as an urban area with more than twenty million people. These cities are often made up of multiple large urban zones that have grown together into one continuous urban region. Examples include Delhi, Sao Paulo, and Shanghai. The challenges that meta-cities face are often more extreme than those of mega-cities. Coordinating governance across such a vast area becomes more difficult, and basic systems like transportation, housing, and water management are put under tremendous pressure. Because they are hubs of finance, politics, and migration, meta-cities also tend to amplify regional inequality, drawing resources toward themselves while leaving surrounding areas underdeveloped. Before we move on from mega-cities and meta-cities, let's take a quick look at one question about them from the two thousand twenty-four exam. The question was: Explain one reason why migrants to meta-cities may have difficulty obtaining housing. You could have answered that question like this: Housing supply often cannot keep up with rapid population growth. This reduces the number of vacancies and pushes up housing costs, which is why migrants may have difficulty accessing housing. Okay, so that's the developing world. For AP Human Geography, you also need to know about city growth in the developed world. We'll explore this in three steps: outward expansion, the emergence of new land use forms, and challenges caused by outward expansion. Outward expansion refers to the growth of cities out into rural lands on the city outskirts. This can occur in three patterns: suburbanization, sprawl, and decentralization. Let's start with suburbanization. This refers to the movement of people from dense urban cores into lower-density residential areas at the city's edge. It is often motivated by a desire for larger homes, quieter neighborhoods, and perceived improvements in safety and school quality. Sprawl refers to the unplanned and low-density spread of development over large distances, often without sufficient transportation or public infrastructure. Decentralization extends this concept further by describing the movement of jobs, shopping centers, schools, and services out of central business districts and into the periphery. These three processes work together to transform traditional city structures into more dispersed, multi-centered regions. Three new land use forms have emerged from these processes: edge cities, exurbs, and boomberbs. Let's look at each one in turn. Edge cities are clusters of commercial and business activity located on the outskirts of a metropolitan area. They often emerge near major highways and grow into major employment and shopping centers, sometimes rivaling the original downtown. Exurbs are areas even farther out than suburbs, often blending residential land with formerly rural or agricultural zones. People who live in exurbs typically commute long distances to urban centers and rely heavily on personal vehicles. Boomberbs are fast-growing suburban cities that have urban-scale populations, often over one hundred thousand, but lack the historical downtowns or dense infrastructure typical of traditional cities. These places grow so rapidly that infrastructure, services, and urban planning often lag far behind population growth. Three major challenges created by decentralization and these new urban forms are: infrastructure strain, environmental impact, and socio-economic segregation. Let's take a closer look at each. Infrastructure strain occurs when fast-growing areas like boomberbs or exurbs add thousands of residents without having enough roads, schools, water lines, or emergency services to meet demand. Local governments may struggle to build fast enough to keep up. Environmental impact is another concern. Sprawl consumes open land, destroys habitats, and increases car dependency, which leads to higher greenhouse gas emissions. It also increases stormwater runoff and disrupts natural water systems. Socio-economic segregation increases as higher-income households move into new, well-serviced outer suburbs, leaving lower-income populations in older, underfunded city cores. This can result in unequal access to education, healthcare, public transit, and employment opportunities. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on cities around the world. Check your answers for this section using the Study Guide and Answer Key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit Six Point Three. In this lesson, we'll explore the role of world cities in today's global system. There are two big ideas we'll cover. First, we'll learn how world cities sit at the top of the urban hierarchy and help drive globalization. Then, we'll look at how these cities act as global connectors. First, let's look at how world cities fit into the urban hierarchy. The urban hierarchy ranks cities from small towns to global giants, based on their size, influence, and importance. At the very top are world cities like New York, London, and Tokyo. These cities are leaders in finance, culture, and communication. They attract global businesses, house-powerful institutions, and shape decisions that affect the entire world. Because they're so well-connected, what happens in these cities often influences trends, policies, and economies around the globe. Now let's explore how world cities help drive globalization. Globalization is the process of the world becoming more connected through trade, technology, and ideas. World cities are like engines that keep this process moving. They host major international airports, company headquarters, and events that bring people from many countries together. These cities create the ideas, products, and services that spread across borders and influence how people live around the world. For example, fashion trends in Paris or tech innovations in San Francisco can quickly reach people everywhere. Now let's move on to our second big idea: How cities act as global connectors. This section has two key parts. First, we'll learn about the networks and linkages that tie cities together. Then, we'll see how cities help manage or mediate global processes. Let's start with networks and linkages. World cities are part of huge networks that connect them to other places. These networks include transportation systems like international airports and shipping ports, but they also include communication systems like the Internet and media. These linkages let people, goods, and ideas move quickly between cities all over the world. A business deal might be planned in Hong Kong, confirmed in London, and carried out in New York, all within the same day. These fast connections are what keep the global economy running. Now let's look at how cities mediate global processes. To mediate means to guide, shape, or manage something. World cities don't just connect, they also help control what moves through those connections. For example, world cities often set the rules for finance, fashion, media, and even global politics. If a city like Geneva hosts international organizations or Washington D.C. helps decide military actions, those decisions ripple across the world. In this way, cities become powerful hubs that shape how global events unfold. To wrap up, world cities play two major roles in the global system. First, they sit at the top of the urban hierarchy and help power globalization. Second, they are part of strong global networks that connect people and ideas, while also helping to guide and manage global processes. Understanding world cities helps us see how a few powerful places can influence the entire planet. Okay, that brings us to the end of Unit Six Point Three. As usual, check your answers for this section using the Study Guide and Answer Key before moving on, and when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit Six Point Four. In this lesson, we will look at how geographers explain the size and distribution of cities. To explain this, we will examine four major ideas: the rank-size rule, the primate city, the gravity model, and Crystler's Central Place Theory. The first concept is the rank-size rule. This principle says that in a well-developed country, the population of a city is inversely proportional to its rank. That means the second-largest city will have about half the population of the largest city. The third-largest will have one-third the population, and so on. This pattern shows up most clearly in countries with a long history of even economic development across multiple regions like the United States. In these cases, no single city dominates the country. Instead, there are many large cities, each offering different kinds of services and opportunities. The rank-size rule is helpful because it shows a balanced urban system, where economic and political power is spread across several urban centers. It also suggests that people in smaller cities can still access many goods and services without traveling to the largest city in the country. The next concept is the primate city. A primate city is more than twice as large as the next biggest city in a country and often dominates the country in terms of culture, politics, and economy. Examples include Paris in France, Bangkok in Thailand, and Buenos Aires in Argentina. These cities concentrate wealth and power in one place, often at the expense of smaller cities or rural regions. While primate cities can be centers of innovation, culture, and global connection, they can also create problems. Too much focus on a single city can lead to overcrowding, traffic, pollution, and a lack of investment in other regions. People from across the country may migrate to the primate city, creating uneven development and increasing pressure on infrastructure. The third concept is the gravity model, which is used to predict the interaction between two places. It's based on the idea that larger cities have a stronger pull, just like larger planets have more gravitational force. According to this model, interaction between two cities depends on their population sizes and the distance between them. The bigger the cities and the closer they are, the more likely they are to exchange goods, people, and ideas. The gravity model helps explain patterns like commuting, shopping, migration, and economic trade. For example, a small town near a big city might have strong connections with it, even if they are technically in different states. The model helps planners and geographers understand why people travel and where services should be placed. The final concept is Crystler's Central Place Theory. Central Place Theory is a way to understand how cities and towns are spaced out and why they're located where they are. It says that bigger cities, called central places, offer more goods and services, and people are willing to travel farther to reach them. Smaller towns offer fewer things, so people only go short distances to get what they need. The theory also explains how these cities and towns are spread out in a pattern. The idea is that you'll find lots of small towns close together, but bigger cities are farther apart. That's because not as many people need the high-level services big cities offer, like universities or specialty hospitals, so those cities don't need to be as common. In short, Central Place Theory helps explain why we see a few big cities, more medium-sized towns, and lots of small towns, all placed in a kind of organized pattern based on what people need and how far they'll travel to get it. Okay, that brings us to the end of Unit Six Point Four. As usual, check your answers for this section using the Study Guide and Answer Key before moving on, and when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit Six Point Five. In this lesson, we will study six major types of urban models that describe how cities are structured. First, we will look at four classic models developed from cities in North America: the Burgess Concentric Zone Model, the Hoyt Sector Model, the Harris and Ullman Multiple Nuclei Model, and the Galactic City Model. Next, we will study bid-rent theory, which helps explain why certain types of land use are found in certain parts of the city. Finally, we will explore urban models drawn from Latin America, Southeast Asia, and Africa, which reflect different cultural and historical patterns of urban development. Let's start with the concentric zone model. This model is one of the earliest models used to explain urban structure. It describes a city as a series of concentric rings moving outward from a central business district. If you've got the Study Guide, fill out your own diagram as you watch this section. At the center of this model is the central business district. This area contains offices, government buildings, banks, theaters, and shops. Land values are highest here, so few people live in this zone. Instead, it is busy during the day as people commute in for work and business. Surrounding the central business district is an area called the Zone of Transition. This area often contains older housing and abandoned buildings. Often, new immigrants and low-income families live here because the housing is cheap. There are often also factories, warehouses, and small industries in this zone, which can make it noisy and polluted. The next zone is called the Working Class Residential Zone. This ring is made up of modest homes for the working class who are employed in factories or nearby industries. The housing is built close together. Residents here often live close enough to the city for them to walk or take short commutes to their jobs. The next zone out is called the Middle Class Residential Zone. This area consists of larger, better-quality houses for middle-income families. It is quieter, cleaner, and further from industrial activity. Families living here often seek more space, privacy, and better living conditions than in the inner rings. The outermost ring is called the Commuter Zone. This is where wealthier residents live. This zone includes spacious homes, yards, and cleaner environments far from industrial centers. People commute from here into the city for work, which became more common when cars became affordable and more commonplace for wealthier families. This model is based on early twentieth-century Chicago and reflects a time when cities expanded outward as they grew. It assumes land is flat and transportation moves equally in all directions. While many modern cities are more complex, some still show patterns similar to the concentric zone model. Next is the Hoyt Sector Model. This model suggests that cities develop in sectors or wedges rather than rings. Instead of expanding evenly outward, cities grow along transportation routes like roads, railways, or rivers. The central business district is still central, but sectors of industry, low-income housing, or high-end residential areas stretch outward from it in specific directions. For example, industrial zones may follow rail lines, while wealthier residential areas might grow along highways or scenic features like coastlines. This model helps explain why certain areas of a city become specialized zones and why similar types of land use are often grouped together. Next is the Multiple Nuclei Model developed by Harris and Ullman. This model proposes that cities have more than one center of activity. Instead of a single central business district, cities may have multiple nodes such as business districts, shopping centers, industrial parks, or universities. These centers attract different types of land use and are connected by transportation networks. This model reflects the reality of many modern cities, especially larger ones where different parts of the city serve different functions. Next is the Galactic City Model, also known as the Peripheral Model. This model describes a city that has grown outward into a sprawling metropolitan area with multiple disconnected zones. The traditional central business district still exists but is less dominant, and much of the commercial and industrial activity happens along ring roads or beltways. Suburban nodes, known as edge cities, become important centers of activity. This model reflects post-World War II urban development in the United States, where suburban growth, shopping malls, and business parks expanded outward from the urban core. It shows how car dependency and highway systems shape the layout of American cities. Next is bid-rent theory. The theory says that land closest to the city center is the most expensive, so it is usually used for activities that need high accessibility, such as retail, offices, or public transportation hubs. As you move farther from the center, land becomes cheaper, which is more attractive for housing or land-intensive uses like factories. This theory helps explain why downtown areas have tall buildings and dense activity, while outer areas have more open space and residential zones. It also helps explain patterns of gentrification, where high demand for central locations can push out low-income residents as land values rise. Now let's look at urban models from Latin America, Southeast Asia, and Africa. These cities are structured based on their own histories and development patterns. For example, the Latin American city model includes a strong central business district connected to a spine of development with commercial and high-income residential areas. In this model, development extends outward in a thin line like a spoke or corridor rather than spreading out evenly in concentric circles like in the Burgess Concentric Zone Model. This spine often follows a major road or transit line and shows where the wealthiest residents and high-end businesses cluster as the city expands. Surrounding the center are zones of maturity, where older, middle-class housing exists, and zones of squatter settlements at the edges. This pattern reflects high inequality and rapid migration into cities. On the other hand, the Southeast Asian city model is often centered around a port zone rather than a central business district. These cities, like Jakarta or Ho Chi Minh City, often have a mix of colonial and modern elements, with commercial zones near the port and mixed residential zones stretching outward. The African city model typically has three central business districts: a colonial CBD, a traditional CBD, and a market zone. These cities often have large informal settlements and experience challenges with infrastructure and planning. The structure reflects both colonial history and rapid population growth. Okay, that brings us to the end of Unit Six Point Five. As usual, check your answers for this section using the Study Guide and Answer Key before moving on. This lesson's exam-style free-response practice questions test your knowledge of these models and your ability to compare them. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit Six Point Six. In this lesson, we're going to look at four factors that influence the look and feel of a city. The big idea is this: Each city has its own look and feel. We can look at four factors that explain why a city might have its own unique feel. These are: cultural values, the technological capacity of the city, the development cycles the city has experienced, and the role of infilling in the growth of the city. The first factor that influences the look and feel of a city is the city's culture. A city's housing style and neighborhood layout often reflect the cultural norms and values of its people. In some cultures, multi-generational households are common, so larger homes may be built to accommodate extended families. In other cultures, privacy and independence may be emphasized, leading to smaller, more separated living spaces. The second factor influencing the look and feel of a city is the technology available for building it up. Cities with advanced building technologies and transportation systems can support taller buildings and denser populations in a smaller area. For example, skyscrapers made possible by steel-frame construction, and elevators allow more people to live or work on a single plot of land. Public transportation systems, such as subways and bus networks, also enable higher-density living because people can move easily without needing personal vehicles. In contrast, cities with limited infrastructure or outdated technology may be forced to spread out. The third factor is the urban development cycle, which affects where and how housing is built. Cities often grow in waves with periods of intense construction, followed by times of slower change or decline. During growth phases, new subdivisions and apartment blocks may be built rapidly, especially in newly urbanizing areas. In older neighborhoods, buildings may be renovated or replaced as the city modernizes. Over time, this creates a mix of old and new structures, high- and low-density zones, and uneven access to services and amenities. The final factor is infilling, which is the process of building on empty or underused land within existing urban areas. Infilling increases density and makes better use of city infrastructure. For example, a vacant lot in the middle of a neighborhood might be turned into a small apartment complex or community park. This helps reduce urban sprawl and makes cities more efficient. Infilling is especially important in cities trying to grow sustainably. Instead of expanding outward and using up farmland or forests, cities can increase housing supply within their existing footprint. However, infilling can also create conflict if new development doesn't match the character of older neighborhoods or if it leads to rising housing costs that push out existing residents. Okay, so that brings us to the end of this lesson. The big idea here was that each city has a unique character. Its character is influenced by its culture, technological capacity, historical urban development cycles, and the use of infilling. Each of these factors influence how a city looks and feels when you travel through it. Before moving on, check your answers to the Five-Hour Exam Ready Study Guide. And if you're doing the FRQ Mastery Playbook, complete this lesson's task where you analyze satellite imagery of a complete this lesson's task where you analyze satellite imagery of a city before and after infilling has occurred. And with that, let's move on to Lesson 6.7. This lesson is all about city infrastructure. Infrastructure refers to the basic systems and services that allow a city to function. This includes transportation networks, water supply, electricity, internet access, sewage systems, and waste removal. The presence or absence of reliable infrastructure has a powerful effect on how cities grow, where people live, and how economic and social opportunities are distributed. In this lesson, we will explore how a city's location and quality of infrastructure influences economic development and social development. Let's start with economic development. The location and quality of infrastructure have a major influence on a city's economic growth. Businesses depend on access to roads, ports, electricity, and high-speed internet. Areas with good infrastructure tend to attract investment because companies can move goods efficiently, communicate easily, and operate without interruptions. For example, industrial parks are often located near highways or airports so that products can be shipped quickly. At the same time, neighborhoods or regions without proper infrastructure may be ignored by developers and employers. This creates zones of economic stagnation, where few jobs exist and poverty is concentrated. Infrastructure also shapes social development by affecting where people can safely live, learn, and connect. Communities with good infrastructure have better access to schools, healthcare, clean water, and emergency services. They are more likely to have paved roads, reliable transportation, and public amenities like libraries and parks. This contributes to higher standards of living and better life outcomes. In contrast, areas with poor infrastructure often suffer from social isolation and vulnerability. For example, without public transit, residents may not be able to reach jobs or schools. Without clean water or sanitation, health problems increase. Poor street lighting and roads can make neighborhoods unsafe. These challenges are often concentrated in low-income areas, reinforcing patterns of inequality. Okay, that brings us to the end of Unit 6.7. As usual, check your answers for this section using the study guide and answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit 6.8. This lesson is all about urban sustainability. This refers to the ability of cities to meet the needs of today without harming the needs of future generations. For AP Human Geography, you're expected to know about four design initiatives and zoning strategies that support sustainability. These are: mixed land use, walkability, transportation-oriented development, and smart growth policies. Within smart growth, you're also expected to know three specific policies: new urbanism, green belts, and slow-growth cities. Then we'll look at what AP Human Geography calls the "praise and criticisms" of this group of sustainability strategies. Let's start with mixed land use. This refers to combining different types of buildings and functions, such as housing, offices, and shops, within the same area. Instead of separating residential, commercial, and industrial zones, mixed-use development allows people to live, work, and shop within walking distance. This reduces the need for cars and creates more vibrant communities. Walkability focuses on designing cities where people can move easily and safely on foot. This includes having sidewalks, crosswalks, shade trees, and street-level shops. Walkable neighborhoods reduce pollution, encourage exercise, and support local businesses. High walkability is often paired with public transportation and compact housing. Transportation-oriented development places housing and services near major transit stations, such as subways or bus lines. This design reduces traffic congestion and makes commuting more efficient. It encourages the use of public transportation instead of cars, helping reduce air pollution and carbon emissions. Smart growth policies aim to limit sprawl and encourage more efficient urban forms. These policies encourage building upward instead of outward, redeveloping old urban areas, and protecting open space. Within smart growth, new urbanism promotes compact, pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods with mixed housing and walkable streets. Green belts are rings of protected land around cities that prevent urban expansion and preserve natural areas. Slow-growth cities adopt policies that deliberately limit the pace of development to protect resources, preserve community character, and manage infrastructure more effectively. While sustainable design has many supporters, it also comes with critiques. For AP Human Geography, you're expected to know five common praises and three common criticisms of urban sustainability efforts. Let's go through all of them. First, supporters of sustainable design often praise it for reducing sprawl. By encouraging cities to grow upward or reuse already-developed land, these policies help limit expansion into farmland and natural areas, which also makes it easier to provide services like roads, water, and electricity. Another common benefit is improved walkability. When neighborhoods are designed with sidewalks, safe crossings, shade trees, and shops close to homes, people are more likely to walk instead of drive. This reduces traffic, lowers pollution, and supports a healthier lifestyle. Improved transportation is also a major advantage. Placing homes, stores, and offices near public transit like buses or subways makes it easier for people to avoid driving. That means less congestion on roads and fewer emissions in the air. Many people also value the improved and diverse housing options that urban design can bring. Zoning changes often allow for apartments, duplexes, and houses in the same area, which gives families more choices and helps different income levels live in the same neighborhood. Lastly, improved livability and promotion of sustainable options are key goals. Cities that include parks, clean transit, energy-efficient buildings, and local shops create environments that are more enjoyable to live in while also being better for the planet. Okay, now let's look at the three criticisms you need to know. First, sustainable development can lead to increased housing costs. As areas become more desirable, prices often rise, making it harder for some longtime residents to afford living there. Another criticism is the risk of de facto segregation. Even without any laws separating groups, wealthier people may cluster in upgraded areas while others are left out, leading to social or racial divides. Finally, there is concern about the potential loss of historical or place character. When older neighborhoods are redeveloped, they can lose the unique architecture or cultural features that gave them their identity. Okay, that's it for this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. This lesson's FRQ Mastery Practice Question, which is designed to help you get ready for exam-style free response questions, uses the case study of Toronto's controversial Green Belt to explore the praise and criticisms of urban sustainability initiatives. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic 6.9. Understanding how cities change over time requires data. In this lesson, we will look at two major types of data used in urban analysis: quantitative data and qualitative data. Quantitative data involves information that can be measured and expressed in numbers. This sort of data help us understand the size of a city's population, how it is changing, and what types of people live there. In urban geography, the most common types of quantitative data come from censuses and surveys. Census data is collected at regular intervals, often every ten years, and provides a snapshot of the entire population. It includes information about age, race, income, education level, housing type, and more. For example, census data can show whether a city's population is growing or shrinking, if neighborhoods are becoming more diverse, or how many people live in each household. Surveys collect data from a smaller group of people, but they allow for more detailed questions. Urban surveys might ask residents about their commute time, satisfaction with local services, or reasons for moving into or out of a neighborhood. This helps researchers understand the patterns and preferences that influence urban development. Quantitative data from sources like censuses or surveys help governments make decisions about issues like where to place new infrastructure, like schools and bus stops, or where to target socioeconomic interventions, like policing and anti-poverty measures. Now let's look at the other type of data called qualitative data. This is data that captures information in detailed written descriptions rather than through numbers. This can capture details that can't be gathered through numbers alone. Two types of qualitative data that you need to know about for AP Human Geography are field studies and personal narratives. Field studies involve researchers going into communities to observe behavior and ask questions. For example, a field study might involve researchers observing people walking through a city park to see how they use city services. The other type of qualitative data comes from narrative research. Here, researchers might conduct detailed interviews with people in the park to see what they have to say. Rather than asking yes or no questions, qualitative researchers let people speak about their experiences. This allows people to explain themselves and fully share their opinions. By combining qualitative insights with quantitative data, urban planners and researchers gain a fuller picture of how cities work and how they can be improved in ways that are both effective and fair. Okay, that's it for data collection methods. As usual, check your study guide answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic 6.10. As cities grow, they face a variety of challenges. In this lesson, we will explore urban challenges in five sections. First, we will look at economic and social challenges caused by population movement. Second, we will examine squatter settlements and land conflicts. Third, we will explore policy responses. Fourth, we will examine the effects of urban renewal and gentrification. Fifth, we will consider how fragmented government structures make solving urban problems more difficult. Let's start with the economic and social challenges. AP Human Geography requires you know about six major issues: housing discrimination, housing affordability, access to services, rising crime, environmental injustice, and the formation of disamenity zones or zones of abandonment. Housing discrimination refers to historic and ongoing policies that exclude certain groups from homeownership or safe housing. In this subsection, the AP Human Geography curriculum specifically mentions two housing discrimination practices that you're going to need to know for the exam: redlining and blockbusting. Redlining was a practice where banks and insurers refused to lend or offer services in neighborhoods deemed "risky", often based on racial makeup. Blockbusting occurred when real estate agents spread fear that racial minorities were moving into a neighborhood, encouraging white residents to sell homes cheaply, which were then resold at higher prices to minority buyers. These practices led to segregated and unequal neighborhoods that still exist today. Housing affordability is another growing challenge. As housing prices rise, many residents, especially in inner-city or redeveloping neighborhoods, find themselves unable to afford rent or buy homes. This forces families to relocate farther from city centers, increasing transportation costs and reducing access to jobs and schools. Access to services becomes uneven as a result of population shifts and underinvestment. In many low-income neighborhoods, residents may struggle to reach hospitals, schools, grocery stores, or public transit. These gaps in service access deepen social inequality and limit upward mobility. Rising crime can also happen as cities grow. If a city cannot keep up with providing enough services, some people may become excluded and marginalized, which can push them toward illegal activities. In addition, large populations may strain police forces, making it easier for crime to go unchecked. Environmental injustice happens when polluting industries, waste facilities, or dangerous infrastructure are disproportionately placed in low-income or minority communities. These areas may suffer from higher rates of asthma, water contamination, or lack of green space. Finally, disamenity zones or zones of abandonment are urban areas that are largely neglected by public services and private investment. These may be places with high vacancy, failing infrastructure, and visible decay. While some of these areas may eventually become targets for redevelopment, residents often experience long periods of decline first. The next challenges of urban changes that you need to know about for AP Human Geography are squatter settlements and land tenure conflicts. Squatter settlements are areas where people live without legal claims to the land. These settlements usually emerge on city edges or in marginal spaces such as hillsides. These residents live in constant uncertainty. They are vulnerable to eviction or demolition. A related concept is land tenure conflict. This arises when residents have lived on land, such as space in the hills on the outskirts of a city, for a long time, often multiple generations, but without legal ownership rights. When governments or developers decide they want to use the land, these multi-generational families are often forced to leave. These tensions can lead to legal battles, forced evictions, or protests. Often, these conflicts are not black and white because both sides may have legitimate claims. Long-term residents rely on community and cultural ties, while developers point to formal property laws. Now let's look at policy responses to urban change. AP Human Geography requires you know about two key policy responses: inclusionary zoning and local food movements. Inclusionary zoning is a policy that requires or encourages developers to include affordable housing units in new residential projects. The goal is to create mixed-income neighborhoods, reduce segregation, and allow low- and middle-income families to remain in cities even as housing prices rise. Some programs offer developers incentives like tax breaks or greater-density allowances in exchange for including below-market-rate units. Local food movements aim to improve access to healthy, affordable food, particularly in urban areas where grocery stores are scarce. These movements support community gardens, farmers' markets, and urban agriculture, all of which bring food closer to the people who need it. Now let's explore urban renewal and gentrification. You'll need to be able to explain both benefits and criticisms of these two terms. So, let's look at each one. Urban renewal is the process of revitalizing aging or underused urban areas through infrastructure upgrades, new housing, or commercial investment. While this can bring new life to a neighborhood, it can also raise housing costs and lead to the displacement of longtime residents. Gentrification occurs when middle- or upper-income people move into a lower-income neighborhood, causing property values to rise and businesses to change. On the positive side, gentrification can lead to improved housing, new services, and reduced crime. On the negative side, it often results in displacement, loss of local culture, and reduced access to affordable housing for existing residents. The last topic we need to cover in this lesson is the effects of government fragmentation. This refers to the fact that responsibility for a city's planning and services is often spread across state, county, city, and neighborhood levels. For example, one agency may control roads, another may manage water systems, and a third may oversee schools. These layers of authority can lead to confusion, delays, and uneven service delivery. This fragmentation makes it hard to coordinate responses to big challenges like housing shortages, environmental disasters, or transportation expansion. Okay, that's it for Topic 6.10. As usual, check your study guide answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic 6.11. In our final topic for Unit 6, we'll explore the realities of urban sustainability efforts. As a reminder, urban sustainability means ensuring cities meet people's needs today without harming the environment for future generations. This is a noble goal, but achieving urban sustainability isn't easy. In this lesson, we will explore two major themes. First, we will examine the challenges that urban areas face when trying to become sustainable. Then, we will look at some of the policy responses and strategies cities use to address those challenges. Let's start with the challenges. The six major challenges to urban sustainability you need to know about are: suburban sprawl, sanitation problems, climate change, air and water quality, ecological footprint, and energy use. Suburban sprawl, which you may remember from Topic 6.2, occurs when cities expand outward into rural or undeveloped land. While this allows for more housing and larger lots, it increases car dependency, uses more land per person, and requires expensive infrastructure like new roads and utility lines. Sprawl also reduces walkability and isolates people from jobs and services. Sanitation is a basic service that many cities struggle to provide consistently. In rapidly growing urban areas, waste collection, sewage treatment, and access to clean water can fall behind population growth. Poor sanitation can lead to disease outbreaks, water contamination, and environmental degradation. Climate change poses an increasing threat to urban sustainability. Cities are major sources of carbon emissions from vehicles, buildings, and industry. At the same time, cities are vulnerable to rising sea levels, heat waves, and extreme weather events. Managing these risks while reducing emissions is a major challenge for urban planners. Air and water quality are also under pressure in urban areas. Traffic, industrial activity, and construction all contribute to air pollution, which can cause respiratory problems and other health issues. Runoff from paved surfaces can carry oil, chemicals, and waste into rivers and streams, harming aquatic ecosystems and threatening drinking water supplies. The ecological footprint of a city refers to the amount of land and resources needed to support its population. Cities have large ecological footprints because they import most of their food, fuel, and materials from rural areas. As a result, despite As a result, despite all the urban sustainability efforts we've discussed in this unit, cities find it very difficult to become sustainable. Finally, energy use in cities is intense. Lighting, heating, cooling, transportation, and industry all require large amounts of electricity or fuel. As demand for energy rises, cities must find ways to shift toward cleaner, more efficient energy sources. Okay, now let's look at policy responses that aim to address these challenges. In this section, we need to examine four common policy responses: regional planning efforts, brownfield remediation and redevelopment, urban growth boundaries, and farmland protection policies. Regional planning efforts involve cooperation among different local governments to manage growth in a coordinated way. Rather than allowing each city or suburb to make decisions in isolation, regional planning helps ensure that policies and practices are aligned across multiple towns and cities. This creates a stable policy environment and makes it easier for governments and businesses to plan and implement long-term sustainability goals. Brownfields are former industrial or commercial sites that may be contaminated. Examples include abandoned factories, unused railroad yards, and old landfill sites. Redeveloping these sites, a process known as remediation and redevelopment, helps clean up pollution and put already-developed land back into use. Instead of expanding into undeveloped areas, cities can focus new growth where infrastructure already exists. Urban growth boundaries are policies that limit how far a city is allowed to spread. These boundaries encourage development within existing urban areas and protect surrounding farmland, forests, and natural habitats. Cities like Portland, Oregon have used growth boundaries to successfully limit sprawl and increase urban density. Farmland protection policies aim to preserve agricultural land near cities. These policies prevent the conversion of farmland into housing or commercial uses. They help ensure that cities can access fresh, local food and reduce the distance that food must travel. Protecting farmland also preserves rural jobs and cultural landscapes. Okay, that brings us to the end of this section on challenges to urban sustainability. It's also the end of Unit 6. As usual, check your answers for this section using the study guide and answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Unit 7.